The many functions.
I feel like I look like I'm about to go on a boat, so be careful. How's the soccer game looking?
I literally, I literally switched shirts.
Yeah, oh yeah, you did wear those.
I just switched shirts.
Have people here in jeans?
No, I'm really tired. I was like, as I was assembling this outfit, I was like, this is getting effy, effy about a second.
Finally, this time I wasn't rushing. Less than five minutes to get ready.
All right, good evening, everybody. Nancy Bryan is unable to attend this evening as vice president. I'll be chairing this meeting. Welcome to November fifteenth Business Meeting of the Board of Education. Exits are to the rear and to behind the dais here. Would you please rise for the pledge? Okay, our first order of business, recognition of visitors. Public comments, please step to the microphone should you have a comment to share, state your name, please respect the three-minute time limit. Right, right here, hand to the tables.
Good evening. My name is Nicole Colardi. I have a son who graduated in 2020 and a daughter who's in ninth grade at CCHS. As an educator for over twenty-five years, I would like to think that I know some things about the way a school district works and how it can get itself into troubled waters. I'm here tonight to remind the district of the importance of settling the contract with our Cornwall Teachers Association. While though the teachers are without a contract, I would like to remind the board and our community that administrators were given four percent pay raises, decreased health insurance contributions, bonuses, and fully funded health insurance in retirement. Mr. Dade was thanked with a raise of thirteen thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars. And guess what? I am completely in agreement with these rewards, as we know that in the workplace, money and benefits are how we show employees gratitude for a job well done. Which brings me to the word gratitude. On November eighth, Joe Debold, our K through twelve Director of Guidance, sent an email with the subject line gratitude in CCSD, the district-wide theme for the month of November, and I thought, yes, you are right, Mr. Debold, when you wrote that research has shown that there are significant correlations between gratitude and happiness. You are right, Mr. Debold, that gratitude can encourage a positive mindset. Parents were sent a list of ways that we should reinforce and model gratitude. So my crush question is, why is this district not modeling gratitude? Why are we failing to see the urgency of thanking our teachers for their hard work with a fair contract? We need to treat all district employees, teachers, custodial staff, clerical staff, with respect and a contract that shows appreciation for their contributions to this community. I ask the board to take a leading step and demonstrate that you care about the social, emotional well-being of our teachers. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Colardi, and I am a class of 2020 graduate of Cornwall High School. When I was a student at CCSD, I never understood the inner workings that happen at meetings like this the way that you all do. The reason I feel I need to speak tonight is because if the district has still not settled the contract with our teachers, perhaps it is because you do not understand what happens in the classroom the way I do. I would probably not be wrong if I said that out of everyone in this room, I know the dedication of Cornwall teachers best. I grew up in their classrooms. My teachers pushed, supported, and coached me academically and personally, both in the classroom and on the football field. I still turn to them for advice and academic guidance. I know firsthand that our teachers are hard at work ensuring the well-being of the students of CCSD, but I question what happens, I'm sorry, but I question what steps our district is taking to ensure the well-being of the teachers. I also question how our district administration intends to attract new quality teachers if they are not willing to negotiate a fair contract. From the time I was a kindergartner right here at Lee Road, my family is reminded by our administration how lucky I was to attend a district like ours with teachers like these. And it was true, I was lucky. My sister is now at the high school. She is just as fortunate. I caution you to think further down the road. I urge you to think of the future of this district. Please settle the contract with our Cornwall teachers. Please respect your employees so that Cornwall remains a place where I someday would like to raise my family. Shout out Ms. Chyla for the speech, speech class senior year.
Good evening. Excuse me, good afternoon. No, good evening, I'm sorry. My name is Caitlin Bridget Nolan, and I teach seventh grade ELA at Cornwall Central Middle School. But wait, there's more. I'm also a two thousand four graduate of Cornwall Central High School. I had Mrs. Chyla as well, she was colopy back then, and the former mascot. And as of June twenty twenty-one, I became a taxpaying homeowner of the beautiful Cornwall on Hudson. I'm here today to share something I am very proud of. Four years ago, Kate Palumbo asked me if I would run our school's very first GSA, or Gay Straight Alliance. Being untenured at the time, I was a little nervous to take on this task, but that quickly dissipated when I remembered how much I would have absolutely loved having a GSA when I went to Cornwall schools. I fortunately was mostly accepted as an out member of the community, but I know that that is not always the case, and it was not the case for many others during my time in school. Today, our membership has ballooned to about thirteen students with more who want to join in the winter. These are students who either do identify as being a part of the LGBTQ plus community, but also students who are allies and want to support their friends in a safe and fun club. I've been a proud member of the Cornwall community for over twenty-five years, and the work that we do in the GSA with advocacy and education makes me even more proud to work and live here. In fact, students who identify as LGBTQ that attend a school with a GSA are less likely to miss school, more likely to participate in community activism, report hearing less homophobic and transphobic language, and report seeing more intervention intervention by teachers and staff when such remarks are uttered in school. Furthermore, fifty-six percent of students who attend a school with a GSA report having LGBTQ plus accepting peers compared to thirty percent of those without a GSA. GSAs make LGBTQ plus students feel like they belong. I am beyond proud to have a supportive administrator. One moment. Such as Kate Palumbo, and don't mind my shaking. It's funny, I talk all day in front of people, who recognize the need for this club. So many CCTI members like myself step into these extra roles to further help our students feel safe and accepted, and we are delighted to do it. I hope sooner than later our members receive a fair and equitable contract that reflects the important work that we do in and out of our classrooms and in and around our community. Thank you, and go Dragons.
Thank you all for your comments. Next order of business, presentations, recognition of our CCH, CCHS National Merit Semi-finalist and Commended Students. Mr. Dade.
Good evening. So it is an absolute pleasure to have truly the pride and joy of our district with us in the audience today. We know that we celebrate our academics, our arts, and our athletics, and academics, arts and athletics for our district. And tonight, we're going to spend some time celebrating some students who are truly some of the brightest in the entire nation. So I'm going to turn it over to our principal, Mr. Brian Piazza, to talk a little bit more about these students' achievements.
Thank you, Mr. Dade. Good evening. Tonight, we are celebrating the achievements of seven outstanding Cornwall Central High School students. These students have been recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation for their achievement on the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. All seven of these students are intelligent and hardworking. They have also shown tremendous grit and resilience as they took this exam under very challenging circumstances during the twenty twenty-one school year, which makes their accomplishments even more impressive. First, we have five students who have been selected as the commended students by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Out of one point five million students who take the PSAT and MSQT annually, these outstanding students were among the fifty thousand highest scores nationwide. Due to their achievement, the National Merit Scholarship Corporation recognizes these students for their outstanding academic promise. As I call your name up, please step to the front with me. The five commended students representing Cornwall Central High School are Giorgio Aversa, Lea Hans, Grace Maxon, Anika Fadness, and Andy Wang. Congratulations. You guys can sit back down. Congratulations. We also have two students who qualified as semifinalists in the National Merit Scholarship Program Competition. These students were two out of fifteen, sixteen thousand semifinalists chosen nationwide. This young man and young woman have an opportunity to continue in competition for seventy-five hundred National Merit Scholarships worth close to thirty million dollars that will be offered in the spring. Finalists who win a National Merit Scholarship will earn the title of National Merit Scholar. Our two National Merit Scholarship semifinalists are Emma Tolman and Benjamin Harrell.
So please join me in congratulating these students one more time. When I found out how competitive this was, I was extremely intimidated. It's like when I was watching Jeopardy and I answered two questions right. These are absolutely wicked smart students. We had a national scholar, National Merit Scholar winner last year. So I know our two remaining semifinalists will serve us well and represent us well. So thank you for all of your hard work and dedication. I know it is not easy to juggle everything, and like Mr. Piazza said, to do this in the midst of a pandemic makes it all the more remarkable. So we're incredibly proud of you and wish you all the best with the rest of this year and with your very bright future. Thank you. I turn it over to Mr. Arginio. We will not be offended if you have other things to do this evening. So as we go about our business, if you want to slowly exit, you can, you're more than welcome to stay, but wanted to let you know you're more than welcome to exit as well.
Congratulations. Okay, our next order of business, reports. Our Board of Education's two representatives, John Germain and Caleb Sandler. I hand it over to you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you. So this month, we have the same number of reports as always, but I'm going to start with Willow Avenue School, and we just have a little letter from the administration. Willow Avenue celebrated their annual Halloween parade on October thirtieth. Students had a wonderful day filled with Halloween activities and had a great time parading outside in their costumes in front of their families and friends. The staff joined in the fun and all dressed up as pink ladies for the day, too. Last Friday's School Spirit Day was to dress in red, white, and blue to honor our veterans. Our first grade students have also created artwork for Veterans Day, which is on display at Monger Cottage for the month of November. Stop by and take a long look at our little artists. There are a lot of fun fall activities in PE class. Students have been jogging and playing tag games outside this, in this beautiful weather, along with practicing football skills. For the month of November, students will be learning to throw and catch a frisbee outside with a partner. When indoors, we will be participating in our annual turkey bowling unit. Students try to knock down the bowling pins that look like silly turkeys. Some amazing local and West Point musicians have been coming to work with Miss Subie's beginner and band students. Cornwall has such a great opportunity to be able to tap into such a unique community of accomplished musicians who want to share their love and expertise of their instruments with our students. Our fourth grade musicians and guests are enjoying this experience, and we hope for more to come.
Hope everyone's had a great last two months, as I missed the last board meeting because of a soccer game. I'll be reading the letter from COH. COH hosted their annual Picture Day on November second. Students dressed to impress, and the day ran very smoothly. November is Picture Book Month at COH. This is an international initiative to encourage everyone to celebrate literacy with picture books during the month of November. Friday, November twelfth, was Crazy Hat Day at COH. Students and staff had a great time participating. That same day, students and staff were encouraged to read, to wear a readable T-shirt or sweatshirt that said something about kindness in honor of World Kindness Day. As part of our music department's ongoing West Point musical outreach, we will have another visitor. Orin Olson, a flutist from the West Point Band, will be coming to COH on November fifteenth to work with some of our students. Thanks to the generosity of an anonymous family, COH is going to provide Thanksgiving meals to fifteen families who are in need. The family has been, has been donating baskets of food since nineteen ninety-three. This holiday season, the COH staff is planning to assist nine families for a total of seventeen children with holiday presents. The Student Council had their first meeting on Friday, November fifth. They discussed a possible Keep It Clean initiative in conjunction with the first grade, and they will be doing the morning announcements starting November fifteenth to read the daily gratitude spotlight.
And then finally, onto the building we're sitting in. We have had a very busy and exciting few weeks here at Cornwall Elementary School. On Friday, October nineteenth, we held our annual CES Halloween Parade, and all the students looked amazing in their costumes. We were very happy to see all the parents and family members lined up along the sidewalks to cheer their children on during the parade. At night, our wonderful CES PTO hosted Halloween happenings, and fourth grade students from all three elementary schools came to Lee Road, dressed in their costumes, and had a great time. On Thursday, November fourth, we celebrated Rock Your School Day. Students and staff members got in the rock and roll spirit in a variety of ways, including wearing T-shirts representing their favorite bands, dying their hair green, and dressing like rock stars. These students had a great time completing musical-themed activities in their classrooms, such as creating their own musical instruments and doing science experiments with pop rocks. This past month, this past month, some amazing local and West Point musicians have been coming to work with Miss Subie's beginner band students. On November, on Tuesday, eleven, nine, Miss Wayne Ticks, saxophone player and local Cornwall resident, came to CES to work with our band students. We've had such a great opportunity to be able to tap into such a unique community of accomplished musicians who want to share their, their love and expertise of their instruments with our students. Our fourth grade musicians and guests are enjoying this experience, and we hope for more to come. In honor of Veterans Days, Miss Verdonas class had a special guest, Captain Jennings, visit her classroom. Her students learned about the significance of November eleventh, the difference between the six branches, how to spell their names using the phonetic alphabet, and answered trivia questions to earn coins of excellence that were designed by Captain Jennings. In addition, all of our fourth grade teachers took their students to the National Purple Heart Museum Hall of Fame. The students got to try on different uniforms and had a great experience. In addition, our CES grade four team and students were highlighted in a special NBC News segment about Veterans Day on Thursday. As we wrap up November and head into December, we are looking forward to our Fall Book Fair, Holiday Movie Night hosted by the PTO, and Trees for Troops.
And now the middle school write-up. The middle school SAC is collecting food for Thanksgiving baskets. The counseling center is overflowing with items thanks to the generosity of our families and students. CCMS students honored veterans this month with a beautiful display of American flags dedicated to a special veteran in their life. The flags were proudly in front of the middle school and visited by local vets on Veterans Day in what has become a yearly tradition. Middle school students collected over eight hundred pairs of socks for our annual Socktober Drive. Many thanks to the seventh and eighth grade Student Activity Council, Activities Council for conducting this drive. We are proud to donate these much-needed items to local shelters as the weather gets colder. The annual Cornwall, Cornwall's Got Talent in honor of Leah Bernard, Bernard, Berardinelli will be hosted by the PTO this Wednesday at seven PM. All, all proceeds from ticket sales will go towards the PTO Leah Berardinelli Scholarship.
And then finally, to the high school. At CCHS, over the past few weeks, we have had more of, you guessed it, forward movement in the regression to normalcy. And in that, we've had what you would call a pretty normal month at CCHS. All clubs at CCHS have ramped up, and many fall season sports are wrapping up while winter sports are beginning. Congratulations to all fall sports and their amazing seasons. Special congratulations to the football team and girls volleyball team for their specially impressive distance this year. Additionally, congratulations to both the girls and boys cross-country teams for their advancement to states. The girls team was composed of Adriana Chikatelli, Carrie Murphy, Carrie Beloga, Lillian Stephenson, Sophie Thomas, and Sophia Simo, while Ryan Murray and Jeremy, Ryan, Ryan Murray and Jeremy Jean Charles, the section nine champion, represented Cornwall for the boys races, while the girls, with the girls coming in fourth in the end. As for, as for the arts at CCHS, last week, the CCHS Drama Club held their first in-person indoor show since the onset of COVID. Fools was an absolute, absolute success with packed audiences each night with continuously laughing audience. Also, congratulations to Jonathan Archangel for his acceptance to All Nationals Jazz Band for the saxophone. He was accepted into the most selective group in the nation for high schoolers and will play later this year. The Guidance Department wall of college acceptances is starting to grow as seniors see the fruits of their efforts from this past application season. We can't wait to see what continues to come as CCHS, CCHS's academic excellence is further reflected. And I, what I said at the beginning, I feel is especially important to say, it's really just been a normal, been a very normal month at the high school. I would compare it, other than the fact that we're wearing masks, it's been the same as my sophomore year, which I can't believe sophomore year was the last time we had a normal year, but still, I feel that's how it's been.
Yeah, I mean, same for me, but as it's gotten colder and it got darker so much earlier now, you know, seasonal depression's hitting, but yeah, it's just, it's just a little harder to stay up at night studying calculus and AP physics, but I'm, we're doing pretty well.
That is very true. That is extremely true.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Moving on, our superintendent's update. Mr. Dade.
I can't say anything any better than our students and student reps and their reports. Just excited to continue to all work together to move our district forward to normalcy. So it's great to see all of our athletics showing their great effort and accomplishments. Same with the arts productions and, and we just heard from some of our stellar academic achievements for our students. We also heard from Mr. Joe Debold last, last meeting with our update on all things social emotional supports. So it just feels great to have the district move forward, particularly for our students, which is why we're all here. The last goal that I just want to speak on is our one-to-one movement. So Mr. Dennisbar just reported that our seventh grade Chromebooks are in, so hopefully next week we will distribute those, and then we will have moved to one-to-one, seven through twelve, in addition to kindergarten. So we're getting there. Remember, the goal is by the end of this year to be fully one-to-one by way of devices. Those, there's still work to be done with regards to professional development and what it looks like in the classroom. So couldn't be prouder of our district and particularly our students, but as we head into Thanksgiving timeframe, just extremely grateful to be here and, and serve this great district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next for new business, consent agenda. Consent agenda. Use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make a more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to govern those relative routine matters. Any member of the Board of Education who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent, consent agenda may so indicate. Does anybody have an item they'd like to remove? No? Thank you. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda items as submitted by the superintendent's, items two through eight. Do I have a motion?
The vote.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Onto new business, non-consent items. Two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-three CCD Professional Learning Plan approval. Resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, the Board of Education does hereby approve the CCD, CCSD two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-three Professional Learning Plan. Do I have a motion?
The vote.
Second. Any discussion? I will, I will, go ahead.
I, I just had a question. I mean, obviously, a lot of work went into this, which is great. You know, it's all about professional development and how it's going to be, you know, the forms that it's, it's going to take and, you know, the focus, always improving the student experiences. I just had a question. So I was reading through it, right, and they were talking about, you know, that the needs of staff members will be met by administrative meetings. So it's the different levels of administrative meetings, you know, they'll update staff on the current relevant educational issues, and then the principals and directors' meetings with faculty-staff. They talk about current initiatives and projects. Can, 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 I'm guessing it's Megan since, can you just give me an example of what kind of things are discussed at those different levels? So like, when the superintendent and you update staff on current relevant educational issues, is that like a, a monthly meeting or a, how does that work? And what kind of, what kind of educational issues kind of come out in that?
So I'm not really sure what you're referring to, Margaret, in the plan. Are you, are you referring to a specific or just in general?
No, just in general, because like it was saying, like this is, I didn't know what this was going to be until I read it, and I liked the, the overview in the beginning, like, okay, this is what it is, this is what the focus is, and then this professional, you know, the, the continued learning plan for everybody, even though it's only required every two years, it's going to be reviewed every year. And then it kind of talked about how And then it kind of talked about how those things will be, you know, continually discussed and updated, that kind of thing.
Yep. So although this is a three-year document, this is an ongoing document. It's, it's a living document. I mean, point in case is when we ventured into the world of COVID, everything that was on here for goals, most of it has been achieved and revamped. That's why you're seeing so much in red this time because we really took what we had and then we had to move it forward to address where the survey results led us from both teaching staff and teaching assistant staff, because this is a plan for both areas. And then just kind of what our district focus areas are. So as you know, we have district visions and goals. We also have building visions and goals. And then we have professional learning needs that our faculty and staff have given us the input on. So that's where the culmination of this is. As things change and evolve, certainly we would, you know, look to address them. Teachers are constantly putting in proposals for different kinds of staff development that are relevant to their practice, which are approved as long as, you know, it impacts their instruction. So, you know, to say there's like a specific timeline of first this happens and that, that's not really the case. It's more of a collaborative piece where if it's the vision goal, if it's the district goal, a building goal or a personal goal, that's where it's all woven in within this document.
Yeah, yeah, I, I was, I don't know, I was just thinking, you know, trying to figure out how everything kind of works. So I like that you have, you know, the, the principals and directors meetings. They meet with faculty and staff to talk about current initiatives and projects. So those are district?
That's district. So that would be like during like, think a SIP time, that could be something with that. They could get feedback at a faculty meeting. We could have meetings with department levels, department chairs. So all of that comes back and then it evolves into this plan.
That's awesome. Yeah. I, I was just so amazed at all the work that went into this. You know, I was looking at beds, thinking, oh yeah, I remember when I worked with Tina, kind of what she had to do to get all that information. I'm guessing that's still data. That's still Tina.
That's data. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
You know, and, and when, when people ask me like, oh, what does this person do? I'm like, you have no idea the kind of data that has to go to the state like every five seconds. So I just wanted to really address, I love the, the input from everybody. You know, all the, all the players get a chance to, to input and say, which I think is great. And I, I especially love the, the ELL, you know, the language learners and how that's really, really, really addressed, you know? You can't learn if you can't understand the language, so.
Indeed. And that's required by the state, which is fantastic. And, you know, we put a little like, thank you in the back there. I mean, there was 19 people that sat on this committee. So it was definitely a lot of work, but a lot of collaboration and professionalism. And, you know, we appreciate, I think we have a nice solid document for the next two years. But like I said, it's fluid. So, you know, as things evolve, we certainly move forward to address them and to take care of it in professional development.
Yeah, that's great. And I love seeing all the levels too, from, you know, the district down to principals and, and the directors and the like, and, and the teachers and the teaching assistants all have an input, which is great. So thank you very much. I just wanted to say that. That's huge. That's all I got.
Can I add just a very small, two very small questions, not nearly as meaningful. Just a question on style. Whenever something is crossed out, it's, in some instances, it's still on there? Are we, I don't know.
So.
I even feel silly bringing this up.
No, it's okay. So it was a wording piece that was there, but we want to show you what it was.
It's to show.
Right. So tomorrow, like for example, increase has been crossed out. Enhance is now the new language. So tomorrow, increase will be gone, enhance will be there.
I didn't know if it was a style thing, like increase? No.
No, no, that's what was previously there. Yeah. So if it was, strike it, because we're changing it and see what it was changed to.
Well, something to consider for next time. Yeah.
There you go.
But now that I'm on it, there is an "and" that is missing an "n". And as the words come out of my mouth, I feel so petty.
Where are you?
On page four, just infuse SEL supports and strategies. But like Margaret said, document as a whole, fantastic. But that's it.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll add a point. Larry, a few, a few weeks ago was asking about rolling back to focus, you know, we put our board goals, our district goals out. And as we, as we approve and support different district initiatives and items, how, how do they focus or how do they relate back to those items? If you look in our, our, our board goals under personnel, have we, you know, support personnel with resources needed? I'm thinking this is, this is one of, this is, you know, a, a way we can tie things back to show that, you know, a bit of accountability as well as Mr. Debold's report last time about the social emotional needs. That's also on our district goals. So, you know, we're able to tie these, tie these tangible items back to, you know, what, what we're doing and why we're here. So back to it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you. Approval of board policies resolved upon the recommendation of Superintendent of Schools. The BOE does hereby readopt policies number, and also go as per document, which are recommended as written. Do I have a motion?
The vote.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I think it's best keep me from technology. Policy, the first policy up there is 0310, okay, which is board self-evaluation. We should pull it out and actually have that as a discussion at a board meeting one night. Especially when, you know, right now we're down a few people. So if we could pull that one out, the rest of these policies really, they're just verbiage changes and small things, you know? So they can be approved. They don't need a second reading.
And your, your goal of pulling it out and, and speaking of it further, I would assume that the policy committee reviewed it and is putting up for approval at this point.
Yeah, I didn't just decide it. Yeah. Okay. We had, we had a policy committee, yes. And we, we went through all of these policies that were the, the ones that are going to have second readings. That was in the first consent, you know, the, the first consent agenda. And, and now these, these policies, they're just slight changes. But the one that stuck out was that we felt was something that would be appropriate for a board discussion would be the board evaluation policy.
The, the point that the committee really focused in on was the last line in that policy says the board shall use a self-evaluation instrument.
Yeah.
So just like we had the conversation about my instrument, the board could, could dialogue about that as well. So that's why that one's being pulled.
And I, I don't know if I can speak at this point, but I read through that and I would be supportive too because while I read through it and fully understood the policy, I was more curious about the procedure. I mean, even, even to the points that, you know, were just made around, you know, Mr. Debold's work and the learning plan and how things tie together. I'd like to understand on a more granular level what we're doing in that self-evaluation and how we really get into the, what's going on in the district from that, that higher lofty policy goal.
I think it's more, we were just discussing more of a collaborative at, at the board table to discuss the nuts and bolts of that, basically. The policy is the policy, but the, how to, how to actually.
Right. We're procedural. Yeah.
Louis, wasn't there a, a board capability on super eval?
Yes, there was. There was. So why, why don't we, why don't I propose that we remove 0310 for the season's approval? We'll table this to our work session meeting. Next time, we can have an open discussion about it and hopefully hone this in and give it, give the direction that I believe, you know, we're all looking for here.
We had discussed that briefly, Brendan, that there is part of that super evaluation, that there, there is another aspect to it for board evaluation as well. And that's part of what we would discuss.
Yep.
Can you bear with me with some notes? So I, I researched the super eval on the front end for the, for the superintendent's review. Why don't I reach out to those folks again and ask about that module that exists? And maybe I can have some stuff ready for everybody or actually get it to everybody before the next meeting. So you have it, reviewed it, and we can have a fruitful discussion thereof. So I'll, I'd like to make a motion to remove policy 0310. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion's over. All those in favor for removing 0310 to table to a future meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Back to the approval of the other policies?
I, I just have one question.
Okay.
On policy 4326- E1, that's for parental notification of ELL students. So there's the whole letter that goes out to the students saying, you know, your son or daughter, you know, will be, you know, part of this program and, and all that kind of stuff. And it's a letter that goes out to the parents informing them. I just wanted to make sure that that letter is not just in English. That when it goes to those kids, you know, assuming the kids don't speak the language first, the parents aren't going to either. And I just wanted to double check. I don't know if it comes from the state or what. Like if it's, you know, a French-speaking family, that that letter will go in French to the parents. So they're able to fully understand it.
Yeah, we translate based on family, family needs.
Okay, cool.
Okay. Per document, policies listed 1925 through 8500. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion has been had. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much. At this point, we've reached our second opportunity for the recognition of visitors. If you have something to add, please step up to the microphone. Please state your name and respect the three-minute time limit. Thank you. No? Okay, thank you. Moving on to closing comments from the Board of Education. We'll go down to the end. Start with Caleb, please.
I know most of the National Merit Scholars left before because of how busy they were, but I just would like to congratulate all of them. I'll congratulate them in school tomorrow, in addition, but just so I can say here to congratulate them. Other than that, I don't really have anything else to say.
Yeah, I wanted to congratulate them as well. I've been actually in one of their classes, all, all five of them, or I guess seven. And, yeah, they're, they're just outstanding students and they really make me realize how belittled I am to them. But, yeah, no, congratulations to them and that's, that's pretty much all I have.
Thanks, guys. Margaret?
But can they play soccer, John? That's the question. Yeah, I'll say ditto to what these guys said. I just wanted to point out how much fun it was to see Fools on Sunday. Great show. I know there were some restrictions on the stage because they're sharing it with, with Kevin Franca and his, and his stuff. So, and it's also a fall show with 10, you know, 10 cast members as compared to the, the spring musical, which has 70-something generally speaking. But it was a great show, a lot of audience laughter going on. And, you know, the kids trying to pull off, I believe it was Ukraine, Ukrainian accents, which was fun. A lot of fun kids. And we've seen these kids from, you know, their elementary school days. So it's fun to see them on the high school stage as well. And congratulations to Jonathan Archangel. I believe he's one of two of the saxophonists out of the nation that will be in that jazz band.
Yes, the jazz, the jazz band's actually particularly selective, even in comparison to other ensembles, because they're usually smaller, the jazz combo's smaller. So he was one of two, yes.
Yeah, that's crazy to think, one of two kids in the nation who are going to be playing saxophone for that band are, are from Cornwall, which is awesome. And congratulations to the forward movement of the one-to-one initiative. Very exciting. That's all I got.
I was going to do that. Liar. I'm stodgy, you know? Sitting next to you is a challenge. I wanted to first of all thank Megan and the committee of 13?
19.
19, pardon me. I, I just saw there were a lot of names there. And the work that you did, that document, I know it's a living document and there were quite a few changes there, but they reflect the needs of the student. And that is so important in the staff development. And I really appreciated the report and the hours it must have taken to put it together. Other than that, I just have very happy neighbors with very happy children. There are 10 new children on my street and they're all elementary. And they're all getting off the bus and it's so nice to have all that noise and laughter. And the parents were telling me, they're all in the different, they go to Lee Road, actually, they do. And they were telling me how happy the kids are. And that it's, it's really very, it's, they say they see it, it's such a change from last year that some of these kids had just moved in and never been in the schools. A lot of them were relocated. So that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of what I want to say has been said already, but thank you, Caleb and John. It's always great to understand exactly what's, what's happening in the schools. And thank you to everybody that's been putting everything together beyond the education, all the events from looking at Veterans Day and celebrating and teaching everyone what, what Veterans Day is about and the appreciation we have to have there and the Halloween parades and the West Point musicians. I mean, that's phenomenal, having that sort of talent come into the schools. So thank you for all of that. Thank you, Megan, and, and your, your 19 or 18 cohorts. In terms of putting together the professional learning plan, that's, you know, such an accomplishment. And so much of what we're doing, congratulations to all the fall sports teams and to Jonathan on the, the jazz band nationally. And thanks for the policy work that was done that we looked at this evening. And congratulations for all the national scholars. The, the work and the culmination of your, your years at school and, and getting that sort of recognition for your hard work is phenomenal.
Thank you. So, yeah, again, Brendan's going to get stuck with the really bad part here where everything's already been said. But, so I'll reiterate a lot of what's been said. National Merit semifinalists and commended students, great job to them. The sports teams, I mean, just too many achievements to list for this. I think the volleyball team won the section. The girls cross-country finished third in the state in individual and the team also finished fourth. Yeah. You know, the football team had a tough loss on Friday, but had a very successful season. Soccer team, you guys had a great season. So just a lot of great accomplishments there. Great to see the drama club, jazz band. I mean, two people in the whole country sitting in that seat. That's pretty cool. So, yeah, just really happy to see all of those accomplishments because that's why we're here, to support the kids and, and to give them what they need, you know, in terms of the education and the extracurriculars to help them grow both as a student and as a whole person. And meetings like this are, are really fun to see the fruits of the work that we do.
Yeah, so to start, just thank you to everybody who came up and spoke earlier. I thought you all made great points and represented your point of view very well. So thank you for that. It's always, we always want to encourage people who, who stand up and let their voice be heard. So, of course, to John and Caleb, once again, thank you for allowing us to keep our pulse on what's going on in the hallways. To our National Merit semifinalists, everybody who was commended tonight. It is, it's always stunning whenever we have that, that kind of meeting to see just the, the extraordinary accomplishments that are going on in, in this district. Megan's Professional Learning Plan, I, I sat on that committee a couple of years ago and it was just an extraordinary amount of work, which is probably why I was not invited back notably. But, but the work is, the work, yeah, exactly. That's what, that's what I had to offer. So, yeah, thank, thank you for, for that. And everybody else who, who sits on that committee, I, it's, it's an involved group. It's a lot of teachers, a lot of administrators. And it's, you really do get the sense when you're done with that, that you, you accomplished something as, as a district. So I'm really happy to see the result of that. And also, so I, I saw Fools as well and it was so funny. I, I've already said this to, to John Heinz and congratulations to Tony Ravinsky, John Heinz and the whole crew. You know, you go into a show like that and you think, is this going to be high school funny? Or is this going to be funny, funny? And it was funny, funny, you know? And it's just an extraordinary amount of talent and preparation that, that went into that. I, I mean, I could talk all night about how impressed I was, but it's, it's just so great to see the arts get celebrated and the work that is put into it is, is just extraordinary. So I can't wait for the spring show. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just quickly add, thank you, thank you to Mrs. Quinn for the chocolate. I really appreciate it. I saw it on the desk. I just had to say something. So thank you for the chocolate.
Margaret is the nicest person on earth. The whole, yeah.
But there's no gourds on the table, no? Thank you, Margaret. So I will read a, a, a note here from Nancy. She's, she's asked me to send something out or, or, you know, read her, read her piece this evening. I'll read hers first. This is from Nancy. "The new sign at the middle school looks beautiful and the flags out front honoring our veterans are wonderful. I'm there, I'm by there several times a week. Thank you." "Thank you to Scott Cavallari and Lynn Fern for all the..." Thank you to Scott Cavallari and Lynn Fern for all the sports photos they've shared on social media, it's a joy to see the pictures of all these events. To our sports teams, coaches, families, and to our support staff, you should all be proud of your efforts and dedication. To our arts, musics, and drama staff and students, thank you, you are awesome. And awesome are, are, awesome are our students and staff who come every day and at what level they get their jobs done. To our entire school community, one step at a time, one day at a time, we've got this. I would like to thank everyone, the board, our, our administrative team, staff, and our community members, who are putting in many hours on our committees. We unfortunately had quite a concerning and disturbing incident happen, happen last week. Taking a step back, we on the board do not always agree on the issues, but we work together for the greater good. As a community, we have normally helped each other out, lifted each other up, volunteered, worked together, and yes, disagreed, but still respected each other. Yet last week, we encountered a very sad occurrence of, open quotations, if you don't agree with me, I will go after you, close quotations. This is not what this community has been about. As we explore what is best for the district and our students regarding possible athletic field renovations through the bond we are looking at, we know there will be differences of opinion, but we have asked everyone to look at all angles, to look at what is, in the end, is the best for our students and for the district. There is still much discussion to take place, we understand the history and traditions, but we need to be the best examples for our students as this unfolds. Threats and verbal attacks towards some, someone's difference of opinion is unacceptable. We all have the right to point out our, we all have the right to our point of view, we can disagree, we can really disagree, but no one has the right to go after someone they disagree with. It is irre, it is reprehensible. And I wonder if this is the example we want our children to see. Not everyone gets what they want, so I ask everyone to reflect and take pause. This community should not be a reflection of the ugly discord we see in the world. There is so much good going on in this district, that is what we, this is what we should all be focusing on." Thank you, again, from Nancy Bryant. So I'll, I'll close with Caleb and John as well, you know, as everyone said, you know, thank you for your input, I, I appreciate that, that lens, it's great. John, it's good to have you back. And then simply, I wish everybody a safe and happy Thanksgiving to our audience, to those listening and watching, and to my fellow board members. Thank you. Thanks for an easy night, too. Oh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I assume no abstent, no opposed or abstentions? Thank you, everybody, meeting's adjourned.